Meeting will be held.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay.
So sorry.
We also, do you want me to start again?
Yes, I'm just gonna go live on our um YouTube. So give me one second. I'm sorry, Greg.
That's okay.
And now you are good to go.
Hey, hi, this is Greg Logan, Vice Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're gonna start the Town of Dayton Zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting Wednesday, November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one at seven oh two P M. This will be held remotely. This meeting will be held remotely with no physical meeting location. Those seeking to provide public input should do using the method listed below. Video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Local TV nine at a later date. Live recording of the meeting will be available on the Town of Dayton YouTube channel, which can be accessed using this link, W W W dot YouTube dot com forward slash channel forward slash U C slash T O P A V one three C one dash J zero G R G O F U three three Q. Public input may provide divided using the following method. Contact the office at Kerry Easterday at K E A S T E R D A Y at Dayton uh forward on Dayton slash mass dot gov. Use email subject line Z B A eleven dash thirty dash twenty twenty-one public input and include your name and address for the record. Or you may be able to call five oh eight six six nine six four three one extension one one four during the meeting. Leave a voicemail if necessary. Jump join Zoom meeting W W W zoom dot com or dial by your location six four six five five eight eight six five six. Use meeting ID code number nine three nine one one eight two two four four two four with the passcode of five ten twenty two seven seven. So I'm gonna call the order, uh the Dayton Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to in lieu of the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to give a moment of silence. Okay, I'd like to confirm the next meeting date with the the zoning board members. Uh as I was talking with Carrie earlier, we don't really have anything on the agenda as we speak. Um I'm not sure if something shall come up, but um we do have Christmas. We do have New Year's that week, and I know a lot of people have gone on uh celebrating a holiday. I just wanted to feel out what we had, but dates available?
I I'm open to anything.
Okay. I I know when I was talking with Susan, she's leaving from the eleventh, and she's not due back until I think she said the fourteenth or the seventeenth. I think it was the seventeen.
That night.
Yeah.
Do do we know when now when will Zach be available?
Not sure. But we have nothing on the agenda as we speak, and uh if you look at the calendar, that takes four weeks for something to go into uh the office before we heard at the Z B A level at us. That puts us at the woe of Christmas.
I would say uh this is Jonathan unless something from the Z B A's meeting needs to be continued to December, that we go until January.
Do I have a second on that matter?
I'll second that.
Okay, so uh do you guys wanna do this? Do you wanna set a date in January, uh the first week of January, or would you rather wait to uh Carrie says, hey, we've got something coming in, and then we redo it. We uh I don't know if we have to do it on the meeting, or can we do it through uh uh email?
Uh we don't have to uh have the meeting determined for the next meeting. Uh the only reason why we would do it is if like um Jonathan said, if we're gonna continue something, but uh that's the case, we will have to set the uh the meeting tonight. If if not, we can do it through an email. There's there's nothing saying, there's no law that says you have to have the next meeting scheduled right now.
All right, so if one of our hearings gets continued, that's when we'll set it.
Right.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Everybody else okay with that?
Yep, I am.
That works.
So we're gonna do uh business public hearing. Continue the variance application for Rita A Arujo and Thomas W Arujo zero that and one four two three William Street M twelve L thirty and thirty dash four case number zero three two one. And I believe Carrie had got an email in regards to this, that they would like to withdraw without prejudice.
I did, and you're gonna have to bear with me because I am working from home today, and I am not used to my computer, and it's not allowing me to share the email, so I'm gonna read it into record, if you don't mind.
Yep.
From Attorney Brown, so let me just pull that up. Um dear Ms. Easterday, as you know, I represent the petitioner regarding the variance request for fourteen twenty-three William Street. On behalf of my client, I respectfully request that we be allowed to withdraw this petition without prejudice. Please confirm your receipt of this email. Thank you. Attorney Bill Rounds, one fifteen Broadway, Taunton, Mass. Oh two seven eight oh. And he sent that to my email today at one fifty-nine.
I'll accept his uh termination of uh withdrawal without prejudice. Okay, so the next case on the matter is variance application.
Mr. Chairman, this is this is Jonathan. I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the letter of withdrawal without prejudice for um you wrote the Arrosio property. I can't see the address in front of me, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Jonathan, Jonathan, I.
Susan Pritchard, I.
Peter, I.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So now the next uh matter of business is the variance application. Oh, before we go any further, uh was Zach was Zach a member, voting member on uh this particular application? Do we need to go ahead and point another member? We're seeing Zach's not here. Anybody?
Right, I believe he was a voting member.
Yes, he was.
Was, yes, he was.
Okay, so before we go and get into that, uh who was the voting members? Anybody know?
Peter.
Self.
Sorry.
Peter, Zach, and you.
And myself. Okay, so we need to uh get another voting member for uh in lieu of Zach.
So Susan, for that last vote, we can redo it, and I redo my motion, and I would ask that you be the third voting member, please.
Okay.
So redoing that motion, my motion is that we accept the letter from uh counsel with regard to withdrawing the request without prejudice for the uh Arrosio property. Again, I can't see the address.
Fourteen twenty-three William Street.
Thank you.
And now the variance application is now gonna be held with Peter, Susan, and Greg as well for the application.
That is correct.
Binder Estates on Brook Street.
Correct.
Yes.
All right. Okay. So business variance application Binder Estates LLC zero Brook Street M seventeen L one sixty dash one case number zero four two one uh review and discuss. Uh is the applicant on on with us today?
Uh President.
Yep.
Does any of the voting members, before we go into this, um have any questions or comments from the last meeting in regards to this, if just before we hand it over to the applicant? Any questions?
I don't.
No.
Not yet.
Zach. Susan, no, okay, uh the applicant has the board floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Attorney Brianna Carr on behalf of my client Binder Estate LLC, who owns the property parcel seventeen one six zero dash one on Brook Street. Just as a brief summation of our filings and presentation at the last hearing, um we are respectfully requesting a variance for frontage. The parcel consists of five point six acres, um and it has a hundred and sixty-nine point six six feet of frontage, as opposed to the two hundred and fifty feet required. You meet all other zoning requirements with the exception of the frontage. As previously explained, we have a hardship relative to the shape and topography of the lot with the elevated wetlands where the frontage is. The elevated wetlands also made it impracticable to meet stormwater standards for a subdivision when the client and engineers were originally exploring trying to create frontage for a four lot subdivision. Um our proposal here tonight is for a single family home proposed on the five point six acres of land, which we believe would fit well here. Um without the variance, arguably, my client would not be able to utilize this five point six acres of land. Our lot would have more frontage than several of the surrounding properties here. I believe five of the developed lots here have less than what we are proposing for frontage. And at least fourteen of the developed lots have less than the two hundred and fifty feet required. Um as you may recall at the last hearing, there were some concerns raised about potential archaeological digging and historical preservation. Although those concerns are arguably out of the scope for our request for a variance for frontage, we did take the liberty to look into those concerns, and I did submit some documentation to our findings. First, we submitted the notice that my client had received for the September twenty twenty agenda with the conservation hearing and on the agenda for that. I guess there was a New England Power Company line refurbishment project, which is for a transmission line passing through Dayton. Um they received an order of conditions that night. It's my understanding that project spans over forty acres of land or so, and is expected to start in Dayton next spring. Um the company is going currently going through the Army Corps permitting process. Um they also, part of their due diligence requires them to hire um third-party consultants, which includes archaeological consultants to perform site reviews, but we have not received any notification or documentation to stress that there are any concerns there with those reviews that are going on. We aren't we aren't privy to any issues that they're coming into um with that project. Um the last conversation I have with them is that they are expected to start in the spring um for Dayton. There also um was a second conservation project specifically related to Brook Street, and that was a December R D A conservation filing that I did provide the board a copy of. That was um the Mass Electric Company R D A, which was approved for installation of new poles along Brook Street. Um I spoke with the B S C group who submitted that proposal. I received written confirmation from um James Rhines, who was an environmental scientist with National Grid on that project. Um he confirmed that that was completed, and there were no archaeological concerns or consultants that were um hired for that for that project. So I did provide the board with that confirmation in writing. Um lastly, we did contact the Chair of the Dayton Historical Commission, Ms. Patricia Gales, um and I inquired with her whether any filings would be required or necessary for the vacant parcel of one sixty dash one on Brook Street. She confirmed, and I believe her email was also C C to Carrie, just confirming that no local historic district bylaws for this area, which would quite require us um to go through the Dayton Historical Commission. So we confirmed we do not have to um apply with them for this vacant parcel. Um lastly, the project engineers also have been in communication with the Dayton Fire Chief regarding emergency um department access, and I believe Tracy can speak a little bit more to that um and the combinations that we have made to provide the emergency access here.
Uh thank you, Tracy. You have the floor.
Thanks. Um just for the record, Tracy Dewar of M V L Land Development, civil engineer for the project. Um we spoke with um Chief McGee from the fire department for this project, and we provided him an updated plan um which he was fine with, which showed um still the twelve-foot wide paved driveway, but we have four-four cleared maintained access on either side, so it can be grass as long as it's cleared. Um and then a turnaround at the end by the um the house, and he reviewed the plan and is okay with it, and that revised plan has been submitted um to you as well.
Okay, Carrie cannot did do. So we have all this uh information that uh she had stated from uh James Ryan. Um he sent that letter into us and cut from the concert and uh Patricia Gill, obviously you uh C C'd all that stuff to us as well.
Yes, we do have that, and again, I'm forgive me, I would do it on the share screen, but for whatever reason, my home computer's not cooperating with me. I don't know if um Attorney Korea would be able to do it if I can just she might be able to flip through it if I can um.
One moment, let me just see if I can get that up.
And then maybe I have to make you a host, so let me.
Okay, one second.
You will co-host, and then she might be able to flip through it for you. But I can confirm um that I did receive all the information um both.
Okay. By chief and everyone.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I can share that if you want me to share the screen.
Sure, I did. I made you co-host, so you should be good to go.
Okay, so let's see here. So can you see that?
Yep.
Excellent. Okay, so that was the letter that I submitted to the board with some exhibits. Um we have the public meeting minutes from the September twenty twenty showing that the order of conditions was given to the New England Power Company. We also have um, this is the R D A that was submitted for the Massachusetts Electric Company in December for the Brook Street project. And that goes a couple of pages just um describing their installation of the poles. And then I also submitted um, these are the emails from the B S C group regarding the work in Brook Street, and this is James Ryan's email um which states that to his knowledge, there were no cultural issues that were encountered during the construction for that project, and they did not retain an archaeological consultant um as it was not required. I think that was the end of that. I also have um I believe, let me see. I should have a copy of. Actually, I don't have a copy that I'm able to. Let me see if I can pull it up in my email. One second. Because I can show you if you would like, uh Mr. Chairman, I can show you the email from the fire chief as well.
Carrie has, as well, okay, as long as we have a copy of it, I'm okay with that.
Okay, great.
I believe those were the some of the concerns that the board had had. Um so are you guys all set now?
Yes.
All right, has any uh voting mem- any board members have any questions or concerns on this matter?
Ye- yes, I do. Um can you tell me how this lot was created in? I understand why you say there's a hardship on the lot, but who put the hardship there?
I'm sorry.
What was this lot before? In other words, somebody created this lot with insufficient frontage to do anything with, and and I want to know why. Um it did we give them relief before for frontage, or did somebody take two hundred and fifty feet to create a lot and and then left this short intentionally?
Um it's my understanding that there was a form, a approval uh or approval under subdivision control or not required that was um done. I can't see when that was done, but um actually two thousand and one, it looks like that they separated the lots. Um and at that time, the zoning requirement stated that a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage was required, so it was just shy of um four feet or so and change, or five feet or so and change for frontage at that time.
And how many lots were created in two thousand and one?
Two.
Uh what was it turned into?
To two, um that the lot that's in front that has frontage on Brook Street and then my client's parcel.
So uh the uh in other words, a profit is being made to sell this lot with insufficient frontage when it it they created their own hardship by doing this.
The previous owners, I I mean, I can't speak to um the profit or anything that was made, but that was before my client had owned this property um many years ago. And I I believe they may have owned both properties. I'm not sure. Um but that was in two thousand and one, so I don't think my client really has any knowledge of um the process that was taken at that time.
Uh how long does your client own this property?
Um Mike, when did you purchase this property?
Uh last January.
And why would you buy it if it wasn't buildable?
I was trying to um perform a uh small subdivision where um it would be in compliance, but uh we ran into some engineering issues so that um that route um wasn't viable.
I believe it was the elevated wetlands in the front of the property that made it so that the meeting, the stormwater standards for a subdivision would be impracticable. Um we were trying to create frontage to get around um the lack of frontage here, and we weren't able to do so.
Okay. All right, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, no voting members have any other questions?
No, I don't.
I would just ask the the other members who um have the visual with regard to the turnaround at the end of the driveway by the house.
Yeah, according to uh the mid uh the fire chief, he sent a letter with the design that they submitted saying that was acceptable. Um I have not seen other what it is, but um it uh according to what the attorney is stating that uh they have that letter and so doesn't Carrie.
Okay, thank you.
I do have the plan available. If you'd like me to share my screen to show that plan that was submitted um to the board as well as to um the fire chief.
Okay.
Would you like me to share that?
I would.
Yep.
Yeah, I would.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, Jonathan, she they have a large area for turnaround at the top near the house.
I didn't know if you or Peter had had were able to see a plan or not, so I'm glad she's able to share.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm looking at it now. It's rather large for the area of the turnoff for the fire truck if or any kind of apparatus that would need to turn. It's on the it's on the drawing. All right. Any other uh members of the board? And nobody else? Uh any public input on this matter? Carrie, you see anyone else on the on there trying to weave themselves in?
I am looking to see if anyone from the public is looking to participate.
Hi, good evening, Morris Joyce.
There you go.
Thank you. With with the uh plan up, I could not access the unmute button.
Um for the record, could you tell me like your name and where you live?
Uh Morris Joyce, M A U R I C E J O Y C E three nine nine Brook Street. I'm a director of butter to the project.
Okay.
And I'm glad they have done a preliminary uh investigation into the historic and uh ideological sensitivity of the lot. I think uh they've done preliminary work. I have a couple of questions uh concerning A uh the creation of the two lots. Originally, that one lot was owned by Fanning Lima, and uh they sold off the house, leaving a piece of vacant land be uh cited, which is the uh subject of this uh appeal. And uh for whatever reason, they left it uh shot. I don't know whether they needed the uh extra land to like get a sale on the house or what the story was, but they they've created, they created their own nightmare. Uh secondly, um I question uh the use of uh land uh that is an easement for a frontage. In other words, the land that they're using for frontage is the land where uh National Grid goes across. And somewhere in the back of my mind, uh there is a question as to whether or not you can use uh land which is an easement for uh for frontage. Uh Attorney Korea may be able to speak to that issue.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was writing down some things, yes.
Okay, um I believe in speaking with the engineers that we are, we will need to file and work with National Grid due to the easement there. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Tracy and Brian, but um we're aware of that. There isn't anything that we're aware of that prohibits us from using that frontage or anything to that extent. Um it's just uh working with them and filing with them to make sure that um we do everything appropriately, which we don't see see to see have an issue with.
You're not building any structure or putting anything on the easement. You're just going across the easement, correct, using as an entrance?
Correct.
We are.
That's correct.
And National Grid provided us a list of their prohibited items, so we made sure we kept the house and steps and everything outside of it.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman and and uh uh Brian Dunn for the record with M V L Land Development and Permitting. And in my thirty-five years of of doing this, I've never heard um the the length of an easement or the width of an easement being subtracted from any type of frontage requirement on any lot. Um easements are separate on top of the lot and uh are not subject to uh taking away frontage or removing of uh distance along a constructed way.
Well, where it's a public purpose easement, I E in a utility easement, I think this um and the case law escapes me, but I think there's a case on it. That may be something that uh Attorney Korea might want to investigate.
I'm not aware of that case law, but um the case law surrounding easements just allows a utility company to use that land for their purposes, but it does not give them a a right in it. Um it's the property owner's property. Um so they, you know, they don't own the property. They just have a right to use it for um their utility purposes. Um and I also have never seen anything where an easement would take away from frontage for that type of purpose. But I mean, we, like I mentioned, we will be working with National Grid just to make sure that we don't have anything that would disrupt their use of that property um for their utility purposes, which we do not have an issue with.
Yeah, and uh just to be clear, you uh say you'll be working with National Grid. Have you uh had any contact uh beyond peripheral contact with them concerning this project?
I believe Tracy just had um mentioned that she spoke with National Grid, and they gave them a list of um the areas that we, you know, that we need to abide by and what's allowed there. Um so she has been.
She did. She did say that.
Yes, thank you.
So Morris Joyce, are you for or or against for the uh petition?
I I am against the petitioner. Not that I begrudge any developer the right to build. I think there are too many problems with the lot. Uh and I am strongly uh opposed to the uh construction of a house under a uh power line of that nature. But it's not like it there was a one uh a two twenty running up there. That's considerably more power. And uh that type of uh power line does give off some sort of a radiation that would not be beneficial for the inhabitants of the home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other public input? All right, I'm gonna go back to the members of the board. I have a question on listening to a few things that was brought up of you had said two hundred and fifty feet of frontage now. Friend of mine lives directly across the street from this piece of property. Um there is water running by that road, am I correct?
I believe there is, but we've been working. Oh, Trace, if you want to answer that, but we've been working.
Sorry, it took me a minute to unmute. We've been talking to Somerset Water, and we will have the ability to tie into that.
Yeah, because that's what he did. Uh he had a well and he tied in. And uh my uh this question might be for Pete. I'm not sure, because I I'm not familiar with it, but I believe if we if Somerset has the water running by the road, that's why in two thousand and one, they were all they were able to bring it down to one hundred and seventy-five feet of fines versus two hundred and fifty feet. Would that be correct, Pete?
Correct.
Okay.
They they only need one seventy-five right now.
Right, and right now.
Not a variance from two fifty.
Right, and you're at one hundred and sixty-six feet right now, you're stating?
I believe one hundred and sixty-six point nine, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
One sixty-nine point six.
Thank you.
So five point three four feet.
Five point three, okay.
Thank you.
I'm also. All right, uh so.
Well, I don't have an issue with uh with approving it um.
For the frontage?
For the frontage, I mean, that is this is short, just a few feet. Um as far as the power lines go in an easement, when you um are looking for frontage.
Um, are looking for frontage, you count the easement. That, that has, that's, that's part of their property, regardless of the fact that they, they've let the power company or whoever. Need it for, for an easement. So you can't subtract that and say that they're twenty-five feet less than, than what they have. Um, or whatever the easement width is, but I, as a. Driving through that neighborhood, it's not going to be a detriment to the neighborhood. There are a lot of houses on there. That street now that only have a hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage that I don't think it's going to change the character of the neighborhood that much.
No, and as for the house being built on the power lines, it did the same house up on. Center Street, not that I'm saying it's good for the person that lives there on Center Street, there's a house directly under the high tension lines.
Right, that's the choice that they make.
Of course. So. Alright, so all, all members are all set. They've heard everything. We've had all the public input on this matter, so if you want to make a motion. If anybody want to make.
I would make a motion to, to approve this with the. The variance, approve the variance with the short frontage.
I have a motion on the floor, approve the variance with the shortage of frontage. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, Greg Logan. Okay, motion passes, so they, they'll have to get a hold of Carrie and I believe what they have it. Uh, is it a twenty day or thirty day grace period?
Twenty day grace period.
Okay.
It's gonna be a twenty day appeal period, so I need to write up a decision, so Attorney Korea, I'll be in touch with you. Because there's going to be some forms that I need signed. On to get, so that we can have the council write up the decision and time for the board to sign it, but I'll be in touch.
And don't forget Attorney. Which also, the week of Christmas is going to fall right in that twentieth. I know certain people aren't around, so it might be a little tight, but I'm just giving you a heads up now.
Thank you very much.
So it will be a little time before we get everything solidified, but I'll be in touch and we'll.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, good luck.
Thank you.
Why not?
Thank you. Okay, so review, discuss act of Stonegate Landing request for project change. As a petitioner here.
The petitioner is not here. I did get another late email, which I included into. Your last minute package when I did an update and I can read that and do record for you as well.
Sure.
Um, so as you know, they originally were asking for another notice of project change, but then Attorney. Mitchell had a couple of conversations with them and since that time they. Mr. Cusson had sent her an email who then in turn forwarded it to me. Um, let's see what the date of that is. November twenty-ninth, um, at five fifty-two P M. Uh, dear Chairman Karen, I have spoken today to the Board's Counsel Attorney Marguerite Mitchell regarding. The applicant's notice of project change dated November eleventh, twenty twenty-one. As a result of the conversation, we have decided if. It's best to withdraw our November eleventh, twenty twenty-one request without prejudice. Thank you, Delphic Associates Paul E. Cusson.
Okay.
So if you would like to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a, make a motion that we accept the letter of withdrawal without precedent. Uh, from Paul Cousins for Stonegate Landing.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all of it, that's a unanimous. Alright, so that's all set.
Can we discuss that for example, for a second? Can you tell me what's going on with the, the property, the lot that was sold as a market rate that was supposed to be affordable? Does anybody know?
Yes, so the one that was, that was from quite a few months ago, correct?
Yep.
So it was determined a while ago that there was one, it looked like in the assessor's records. That. There, the market rate and there was a, I think it was lot three and lot five. Lot three was supposed to be an affordable. Lot five was a right, it was a market rate. And at one point, the board made a vote. To switch the two. And so, and they did switch it and both lots were properly sold. So lot five then became the affordable and that was sold as an affordable.
Okay.
Lot three was sold as a market rate and that was all set. And, and everything's okay on that part, but in discussions with Marguerite. Um, we're not quite sure like. The formality, the formality of it was done correctly, if that makes sense, so we're still working on that. So the good news is we didn't lose the inventory. The inventory is still there. But it's just the formality of the paperwork, for lack of a better term. So we're still working on that part. Um, so I don't have much of an update other than we haven't lost the inventory. That's a good thing.
Right, well, that, that's what I was concerned about, obviously, and. And want to make sure going forward that it, it just that.
It doesn't happen.
Um, doesn't happen again.
Exactly.
Developer is notorious for. Um, saying he, he doesn't know. Um, or didn't understand the, the rules and it, it, it doesn't happen again.
Yes, and I will say that I have been in close contact with the monitoring agent on this development. So that's been very well too. Um, I've been in close contact with her because there's been another incident where there was an individual. Who had an affordable unit in there and put it on the market. Uh, for a market rate and I immediately got in touch with her. And.
They can't do that.
She stopped. She, you know, she got in touch with that real estate agent and said, ah, no, 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 you can't do that. Um, so we're, I'm on it.
Okay, good job.
They, they, one of the, one of the tough things is, is sometimes we don't realize it until we actually see it hit the market like on Zillow.
Right.
Or something, but we are keeping a close eye and just making sure that, you know. All of that, and some of it is too, like in that instance, it's the actual homeowner who forgets.
Yep.
Um, so, yeah, and. Sometimes that happens, I guess, so to speak, or, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, yeah, be nice and say they forgot. And they're trying to sell it and so. And they just need that friendly reminder saying, hey, no, you can't, you know, there's a special way you can only sell that property. So, and that's what she did. The monitoring agent reached out to that homeowner and said, sorry, you can't, that's not the route to take, so. So, yes, and I did talk to that monitoring agent extensively about this development moving forward.
Now, he had to take and sell the land back to. The applicant and then the homeowner had that, we, he did all that, right? Already? He had to take them, that lots three and five, sell it back to himself.
Correct, in order to get those building permits.
Correct.
Yes, he did follow through with that, um, and everything. Um, he's, um, the building commissioner was able to issue the building permits on those. So he was able to prove, um, from the registry that, that they were deeded back to him. And those are, he completed what he was supposed to do on that matter. And so he's all set on that matter and was able to obtain building permits correctly.
Alright. Everybody all set with that one? So we approved, accepted there?
Yep.
Good to go.
Now we got the incorporate applicant's responsibility of legal fees for case review and written decision on application. So, uh, you want to give us a little input on that, Carrie?
Sure, so, um, if you recall from last month's discussion, we were trying to figure out a way. To obtain the legal fees for written decisions, especially when an applicant gets a denial. And as you may recall through our discussion, I was asked to obtain. Some examples from other towns, surrounding towns and, which I did. And some of them just provided some language where they signed directly like on the application saying, yeah, I agree to the project review fees. Also including, I think it was, um. Free Town. I want to say Free Town, which I thought was a pretty simple and easy way to do it. Um, I also understand that I will be responsible for paying the cost of any engineering, architectural, legal. Or other consultants deemed necessary by the zoning board of appeals to assist in its consideration of this application. Pursuant to general law forty-four fifty-three G and that failure to timely pay such costs. Shall constitute grounds for denial of this application. Um, and then I found that some other towns were pretty similar. Excuse me, in that, um, failure of the applicant to pay all review fees shall be grounds for denial of this application. Um, and that was from. Somerset, and then there was another one from Berkeley who has an applicant on their fee. Um, under their instructions and they have the fee, just explaining what the fee is. And same thing, um, all consultant expenses are governed by the procedures set forth in general law chapter forty-four, section fifty-three G. All unexpendited funds from the escrow account will be released back. Um, and then the applicant, the applicant signs that. So it's pretty close to what. Um, I had explained, I think, last meeting, we used to have a form. Way back when, long time, years and years and years ago, there used to be a form that was included in the application package. Um, that. The applicant would have to submit with the application and it was called the project review consultant fees. And it pretty much said the same thing, that they agreed to, you know, agree to pay all project review fees to outside consultants. For review work related to the above mentioned case. And so in your package, last month's package, I created a draft reincorporating that same form. So that way, when that legal bill comes in. And the applicant tries to say, no, I'm not, I'm not responsible for that, you know, we can say, hey, you signed here's agreeing. That's part of the review and part of, part of the process, so to speak. I was also asked to find out the rate, so the rate. Um, is a hundred and sixty an hour. So the rate, I want to say. It's about two to two and a half hours for the written decision for Attorney Marguerite. To get all the information, to review the information, to write the, to write it and then send it off for the board signature. So I, I'd say two and a half is probably a stretch, I'd say about two for your standard, you know, like tonight's variance. I would say that's a pretty standard, hour and a half, two hours.
So we raised our fees from really low, which they were real low right from the beginning. To seven hundred and fifty dollars for an applicant, correct?
Yes, I, I can't remember when that was done, but we did raise.
A couple of years ago.
It was a couple of years ago.
A couple of years.
I think it's more than a couple, but yes, it was several years ago.
And we were way behind on our fees according to other towns after. Looking through and realizing, hey, uh, we're, we're still behind. Um, see, I do this for a living to go to different towns and for developments and stuff and our fees are really low. Compared to some of the other towns, by three, four hundred bucks. Yeah, so, um, so I feel that, uh, I think we should adopt that letter back into the form, even if they initially. Uh, they're entitled to paying up to, uh, all legal fees for the, for what has the wording exactly what you had stated. But I, I'm not opposed to it and I think it should be on there as an initial, um, so to come in front of the board, it'd be the seven fifty. And then going forward, uh, for all the legal aspects that need to be written for the decision. Is on the applicant's responsibility to pay the attorney.
I think, I think that the, the question I have is in hearing what you were saying, Carrie, if I heard it right. And if I, if I was trying to listen to stuff before.
Yeah.
None of those examples that said, or the application will be denied.
Mm-huh.
And this is, you know, I understand that they, they have to pay these fees or the application will be denied, but in this case, we're also talking about. If the application is denied, so. We need to couch that by saying, or if regardless whether the application is approved or denied. You know, with notwithstanding the application's approval or denial, is I think the way I would, I would word that. Because. Otherwise, the applicant could, could come back and argue, well, this wasn't approved and it only says, or will be, or, you know, or will be denied. Well, you've already denied it, so I'm not going to pay it.
Right.
So that's why I think not, notwithstanding approval or denial is the language to potentially be there. Um, as I said, just to, to get your thought on that part of it, the other part of it is, and I would add, um, you know, and. Uh, notwithstanding, and then I would add another sentence of notwithstanding denial, payment shall be made within. And I would, thirty to thirty days from the date of denial. Notwithstanding any pending appeal.
Okay.
Now, Carrie, I got another question. We can't just up our fee?
Through a public hearing, so, because it's part of your rules and regulations within your zoning. Zoning board, uh, rules and regulations, so you'd have to have a public hearing. To increase your fee.
The issue, the problem with increase, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
The problem with, the problem with upping the fee is. You can charge them two thousand dollars, net two thousand dollars goes into the town's, uh, budget, I mean, town's income. It doesn't offset our legal fees.
Right.
That's right.
This way, we, we, we're trying to offset the, the amount that we spend in legal fees, uh, which we can do with a check from. From them saying they're going to cover the.
I do remember that now, yes.
Right. Right.
And to Jonathan's point, um, the other thing that you want to, you want to make sure that these, the towns are, are doing. Is, and it's what they said, it's deemed denied if you do not pay. So, uh, in other words, the consequence for, for not paying an approval is it will be denied.
Deemed denied. Okay. Good point.
Yeah, so that would have to, in essence, then as something of, you know, notwithstanding approval, denial, or would be deemed denied, denial. If, if not paid.
Right.
And then, so you, you want to put both in there and then I'm still suggesting the, add the, the add-on. You know, notwithstanding the, you know, a denial, the applicant shall, using that word, the legal word shall.
Yeah.
Have, have no more than thirty days from the date of denial, notwithstanding. The, the, uh, the test of time for. Appeal or not with, you know, regardless of appeal.
Okay.
For such payment to be made.
Okay.
In full.
In full, got it. Okay.
I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts there.
Well, I, I agree, um, the problem, problem I see is when somebody's denied it, until they need to use this again, they're not going to pay it.
That's the issue. That's what we were running into, but at the same.
Well, then it goes to, goes to collections.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and that's why, and we're giving, and that's why we're putting that time deadline in there, so that we do have an opportunity to. Take it to collection or I hate to say, ask council to write a letter of, you know, payment is due kind of thing.
Yeah.
Um, because if we don't have a date in there, they can simply argue, well, you never told me when I had to pay it.
Yeah.
So we've got something to, at least we have something to work with.
Right. And there's, there's also, um, you know, there's also the other issue, uh, say they. Go for a building permit. Yeah, they won't get the sign off from the Z B A because they would have that outstanding bill. So we have that repercussion. Um, and I remember years ago, there was one instance where one person was refusing to pay because of the denial. And that form that we used to use, I put a copy in that and I said, you agreed to pay. And as soon as I put that copy in that, I would say within a month, I received a check. So, it did work. So it did work. It did work.
And if somebody really wants the property or wants the approval badly enough, it's gonna have teeth in it.
Correct, correct. The approval, we never have a problem.
Yeah.
It's really the denial. It's really the denial that we really um sometimes have a problem.
I I have a question. If they are denied and then they appeal that, how then do they repay again? Or how does that whole fee thing go from that point? Cuz they're gonna owe the denial is, they pay, is it like around a little over a thousand, like one thou, I came up with one thousand seventy?
Yeah, so the appeal goes to the Superior Court. So it doesn't come back to the town. So if if they get denied and they wanna appeal that that denial, it doesn't come to the town. It goes to the Superior Court. So they will be in Superior Court for the filing fees on that.
I see.
Um.
I think what you're getting at though, Su- Susan, is that if they go to file the appeal with Superior Court, and you, I think what you're saying is if they win the appeal and they've already paid the five hundred dollars to us for the denial, for example.
Right.
Your question, your question is what's gonna happen to that five hundred dollars or whatever the figure is?
Correct.
Are we gonna provide, give that back to them? Or are we gonna say, no, this was the cost of our denial?
Correct.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes, that's what I'm asking.
I think it's a, I think it's a fair question, but go ahead.
There's legal, legal fees occurred if they appeal.
Right.
Uh if somebody takes it to Superior Court, they pay the fifty dollar fee as Superior Court charges, but then we have to send to town council to represent the Z B A.
Oh.
Mm-hmm, right.
So that's why you're saying on it.
So that could even accrue actually.
And all, it it it, yes, it can be a lot more than just
Right.
Um a thousand seventy or whatever you've come up with.
Right, well, that was about two hours, not two and a half of legal.
Well, when I used to write the decisions, they took me two hours and I was inexperienced. So I'm sure my great uh
Yeah.
with with forms and um and just type in the necessary uh wording.
Carrie, would you be able to come back at our next meeting with the um hopefully what you think is the final draft of the form?
Sure.
Do you want one of us to work on it with you or?
Sure, I can draft up on a new one. And then if you want, before our next meeting, I can send out a copy of what I come up with. If you guys wanna comment on it, um and then, you know, provide any input. And then we can go from there if you'd like. And then we'd be ready to act.
Okay.
If you wanna do it that way.
I'm for that. Do we now, do we, is, if we approve this, once it's done?
Yeah.
Do we have to take it to the board of selectmen or does it have to go before town meeting, anything?
No, no, it's just part of our um application package.
Okay.
So we don't, there's no requirement for us to bring it to anyone. It's just for the board to do.
Yeah, I'd be open to seeing a final draft and maybe or maybe not with any comment.
Sure, sure, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all. So we'd already took care of that. Any other questions or concerns on that matter?
I don't think so.
Any correspondence?
Uh no, I have no correspondence.
Okay, you're gonna approve the meeting minutes of October twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Mister Coach here, I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one without change.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Greg Logan. Okay. Wow, we're gonna be going into, Carrie, you're gonna be sending us a new uh a new meeting for the uh executive session.
I just sent it to you now.
Did the same one from earlier, Carrie?
Uh yes, I just sent it again.
Okay, and how much time do you want us to give you?
Um minutes. I'm gonna give Zach and Margarita a call to let them know that we're ready.
Okay.
Um so we just need a motion to go into executive session and not return to regular session.
This is Jonathan. I will make a motion that we go into executive session at this time and this Zoom meeting, open a new Zoom meeting for executive session and not return to our public meeting.
A motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, Greg Logan.
Aye.
I gotta pull the uh the board, Greg.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You gotta pull the board, yes, individually.
You gotta pull the vote.
All right, so I, uh do I have a motion, Jonathan Gill?
Aye. Jonathan Gill says aye.
Jonathan Gill says aye. Susan?
Susan Pritchard, aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Greg Logan, aye. Okay, everyone, that's fine. Uh so I'll see you guys in a little bit over in the executive session. We'll go from there. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.